Hello, everybody, for being here. Alright, we're number three, reconvening open session. Call number one, call to order, open session. We're reconvening open session at five, the... Four, right now, PM. By law, board policy must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. By law, board policy, any member of the public may address the board on an item on the agenda or any non-agenda item, but the public must present a written request to the board. Therefore, I ask you kindly to submit your speaker slips at this time to help us run an efficient meeting. Speaker slips for non-agenda items need be turned in prior to item 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. You will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. You will have three minutes to address the governing board. For those individuals who wish to comment on a particular agenda item, your speaker slip will need be turned in by item 5.7, hearing of the public regarding agenda items. You'll be recognized and called to the podium. When your requested agenda item comes up, you'll have three minutes to address the governing board. 3.2, report of action state in closed session. Governor, governing board in closed session, and here's the next report. 3.3, pledge allegiance. Now, welcome to the podium, please.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
3.4, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Motion passes?
Four points.
Four points, correspondence communication, 4.1, correspondence with superintendent.
Good evening. The superintendent's office has received no correspondence during this previous month.
4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. And I'll call members of the public who have requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding a non-agenda item must complete and submit speaker slip at this time. Is there any public input concerning non-agenda items? There is none. 5.0, five reports, recognition of hearings, 5.1, board recognition, DMUSD employees of the month through 28/23.
Good evening. Congratulations to these DMUSD after-school program employees for the month of February. All of these employees are in our after-school program. So, Uluwaii, Missy, Ayene, Ryan, Bresbahan, Daniela Cruz, Astaron, Yashaline, Maria Andrea Jimenez, Angel Martinez, Ellen Wang, and Isabella Yates. Please join me in congratulating these fantastic employees. We have a wonderful after-school program, well-known throughout the county, and they do great things for our children.
Wonderful. 5.2, board reports from the DMCTA.
President Mock, members of the board, Dr. McCleod, cabinet. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Just a couple of brief comments tonight before we move on and we have the kids come up later. First off, bargaining. We started bargaining, and it's going very well this year. Last year was full contract, which was my first time doing that, and, boy, is that a lot of work, and a lot of meetings, but this year, we've had less, and it's been going steadily, so I appreciate that. But I would attribute it also to the two teams and how we're working together. So, hopefully, we'll be concluding soon, but so far, so good. Second, want to mention and say I appreciate some flexibility regarding the design team meetings. We haven't seen back from teachers before having a hard time scheduling and being able to become available for that, so we met and talked to PR, Dr. McCleod, and we discussed that. She was able to let it go a little longer for teachers to sign up, so we could have a few more conversations about how we could do that, and also some flexibility and people being there for all four meetings, because that's tough for people as well. So, teachers really appreciate that flexibility and that conversation. Lastly, I'd like to say I really appreciate, and also the kindergarten teachers, really appreciate the time and personal attention that was given to getting input from them in the conversations around the full day versus our partial day start of the year for kindergarten. So, thank you to Shada Peterson. Actually, I think you've spent some time working with kindergarten teachers, and they really appreciate the opportunity to give that feedback and have that personal attention. So, that's really all I have for this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Kevin. 5.3, board report from the DMCTA. President will recognize.
Alright, President Mock, members of the board, Dr. McCleod, and members of the cabinet. I'm glad you guys can get dressed that way before, so that's good. I'm excited to come to these days, because we are almost over the Jogathon. It's been a wonderful season the last couple weeks. People have been in the schools, kids have been running, parents have been on campus. It's been fantastic. The only... We had two Jogathons today. We have only one left, and that's the Delmar Heights. Because of the rain that kind of fell yesterday, we were worried about it, and so we moved it to Friday. So, that will be the last one. If you haven't made it to one of the Jogathons, if you haven't seen the new Jogathons back after all the problems we've had during the COVID came out, outbreak came out, you have a chance to jog this on Friday. It will be at Delmar Hills for the Heights Run. Waiting for that school to be built, so that'll be perfect. So far, we've raised over $600,000, so very successful Jogathon. I'm pretty on par with other years, and pretty on par maybe even with last year, so that's great. I think in the fall, there's a little slowdown in fundraising, we're telling you, because of the insecurity that people are feeling, but I think people are just so excited to be back, be able to run and have fun with the kids on school. So, I've heard all the Jogathons have been great, and it's been wonderful to have all the volunteers, to have the people out, the parents out there cheering the kids. It's, I think, it's just a celebration, and I love the fact that what a wonderful way to support our kids. And we're raising the Jogathons to raise money, to help fund C+ credential C+ teachers in our district, but it's also just everyone having, enjoying this opportunity to have fun, to be together, and to support such a fantastic program that we have in our district. So, I just want to thank all the parents, all the kids, all the teachers, district, for your support, and, you know, we still have one more Jogathon, but I'd say I can call it a success. So, where are we in general? Just to tell you, this has been a big bump up since what I reported to you last year, last month, because of the Jogathon. We're almost at 1.1 million. The reminder, it holds 1.4 million, so... And actually, this money's still, this is the most intense period, so these numbers are changing fast. I'd say we're actually maybe even closer to 1.2 as of today, but that's data from Monday, so it still takes a while for all the money to get counted and registered correctly. So, this bump up in our family participation now to 45% across, kind of as an average district-wide. We still expect that to grow by the time the year is out. And matching dollars from employers come up to $105,000, so that's still really wonderful, that there's that support from local employers, supporting what we're trying to do throughout the district. So, all in all, I just want to thank everyone for just a very successful, amazing, kind of Jogathon, and hopefully, hopefully, it will lead to a ability to us to really be able to support our C+ teachers serving students.
Awesome, Will. Thank you very much for the presentation. Well, it sounds great. 5.4, board report from the Delmar Parents Teachers Association. Today was with Carmel Delmar School, PTA president, the Mock.
Alright, hello, President Mock, Dr. McCleod, members of the board. Yes, I'm Gigi Mockland, president of TDM School. So excited to be here, and I just want to say it's always an honor and privilege to prevent, to present in front of you guys. It's such an amazing school district, and thank you for all that you do. We are, my topic is "Love is in the Air," so all have a wonderful Valentine's. I'll be sharing with you what all our amazing schools did in this month to show our community, our students, and our staff some love and spread it around. We'll start with Delmar Heights. They didn't send in any photos, so this is not them currently yet. They had a Valentine's-themed family dance. Their students decorated the MUR with Valentine's-themed cards. Their PTA president, Robyn, said it was an absolute blast, and I think that's an awesome event. You go to dance and an art show, so we know to her. Next, Pacific Sky sent me a video, and I am just not that PowerPoint savvy, so unfortunately, I did not know, hope to some not, so let's just pretend like we saw their amazing video, but it's amazing, too, in an international night, which had an amazing turnout, huge success, and kudos to them. I thought it was so sweet to put that in the month of February, doing so many cultures around the world together, and in the month of love, so that was really sweet. Next up, we have, oh, now my PowerPoint starts, we have Sycamore Ridge. Their PTA president, Sarah, said they did a used book drive through Rio de Janeiro. They also did a blanket drive from Pat, San Diego, and they collected money from rural parents to help give their C+ teachers a little extra love during the holiday season. So, that all sounds amazing. Next, there's some more books that they did, there's their blankets. Next up is Ashley Falls. They turned it up with a family glow dance party, "Love is in the Air" in their Ashley Falls community, and again, they had an amazing turnout. Looks like it was tons of fun, and great job to Valerie. Next up, we have Delmar Hills. Their PTA president, Winnie, said they sent their staff a little love by putting a big box of bat balls in the lounge. And to me, this is just genius. Like, I don't know if she found this on Etsy, but I want to copy it. It's amazing. Next up, we have Tori Hills. Lindy, their PTA president, said they surprised her staff with a cookie exchange, and this is amazing, and a coffee or hot chocolate delivery to their classroom. It's a yummy and convenient idea. So, this is another thing that I am writing down for the teacher. Alright, it's my turn. Oh, here's part of our cookie exchange. Alright, it's my schoolgirl, Carmel Delmar. Every month, we like to show our staff some appreciation with some snacks and treats in the lounge, so this month, we decorated with hearts. We gave them as much sugar as we could, with gluten-free options, and some chocolate roses, just to let them know we love them and calories do not count this month. And before we get to our big event, we had Jogathon at our school, which was amazing, great job, and the PTA really wanted to team up with DMCA. It's not our event, but we wanted to help decorate it and bring more attention to it, so we collected slightly used sneakers, and we used them as part of our decorations, and then they'll be donated this week to a local organization. And now, to our big Love Fest Carnival, it was a ton of fun. We had circus acts, we had carnival games, and we had amazing teachers and staff there to run them and be with the kids in the back. We had face painters, balloon artists, inflatables, petting zoo, and much, much more crafty people doing food trucks, but I was just so, so blessed to see so many kids and family, and it was free for our community. We did a lot of fundraising to make that possible for everyone, and it was just great to see everyone come together. I'm sure all the PTA presidents are so grateful to the principals and boards, and I'm so grateful for our PTA board volunteers, because with them, we're able to provide all these beautiful experiences and memories for our community. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Gigi. That was awesome. I'm hungry. Alright, we're at 5.5. Board report from the governing board members. We'll just go down the line. Mr. Rappert.
Well, first of all, I'm happy to hear that Cal is still counting Delmar. Because we still have a few days left. I attended two court hearings, only to find out that we scheduled the third on the Delmar Heights matter, and I'm hopeful that on March 6th, which you'll hear more about, everything that happens in court will finally wrap itself up, and then hopefully, we'll be able to build that school. So, I'm hoping that that's the case. And I do want to make a point. In a local publication, the reference to the Delmar Heights fiasco, I have an issue with the word "fiasco," because as I understand that word, it's a failure, and I just want to say, the Delmar Heights project is anything but a failure, and it's an award-winning project from an architectural standpoint, and I know the community is looking forward to having their kids go to that school, so I didn't like the word "fiasco" being used. And with that, I have a GLC West meeting coming up. I'm looking forward to that, and that's my report. Happy post development.
Well, I attended the School Board Collaborative, Gigi also attended last Friday, and that is a meeting of two school board members from each of the Peter districts and San Diego. There are five elementary school Peter districts that feed into the San Diego Middle School and High School District, Victor Cardiff, Encinitas, Solana Beach, Ranches, Santa Fe, and us. And so, it's a really nice opportunity for us to compare notes across districts, share resources and ideas, and also just coordinate with the high school district as we look toward, you know, our kids going there when they get out of seventh years of elementary. So, we toured Solana Vista School, which is a school that just was rebuilt, and it looked beautiful, we had a great tour, it was fun to see everybody, so it's really a special opportunity that one of our, one of the school board members organizes. So, if any board members, Catherine has been, anybody ever wants to jump in, if either of us are a candidate, then you is welcome to. And the level of our work.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So, yesterday, I had the opportunity, oh, I'm trying to think. Yesterday, the opportunity to meet with a representative from Mattel for Kids. They are a consulting firm that we're partnering with to do our strategic plan. His name is Cole Lewis, and so I think February 28th is our first meeting, so all are welcome. So, it was nice to put on the face of the name, and I'm excited for that first opportunity on February 28th, and then I think it's right the following night, March 1st, is our next meeting with them. So, it's an opportunity for all of us to share and give input on how we want our district to grow and get better in the upcoming years.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely participate in strategic planning. Those are, hey, we want everybody there, as many people as possible. This month, I went to the DMCA meeting. Thank you, Will, and, you know, you're doing a wonderful job, as can be seen. Thank you to all you and you and all the wonderful volunteers, and that you guys take your time and your effort to support our district. I really appreciate it, and, you know, it's a lot of work, and I appreciate all the work that you do. It was also Pacific Sky International Night. Catherine happened to be there as well, so for those that, we weren't able to see a video, I can give you a quick rundown, and it was a wonderful community event. It was fantastic. There was lots of food. I was constantly just eating random things from everywhere. I found out my neighbors are incredible cooks, so I'm gonna like have to go stop by their house now and just like knock on the door and tell them the evening. They're wonderful performers. It was, it was great, including Catherine's daughter. So, it was really what I kind of envisioned, like a community event once, you know, when we were originally trying to think, having a school being built. It's, it all is coming together. It's all going to be fantastic, so very happy about that. The other thing I was at was at the Equity Conference, and it's put on by the San Diego County Office of Education. Lots of interesting, thought-provoking speakers, but I did want to highlight our very own Shelley Peterson, who was along with Sharon Morio, our teacher on special assignments, presenting about diversity, equity, inclusion work that was being done in our district. Did an excellent job, fantastic job explaining everything that's the districts that are taken, and, you know, as Shelley was talking about, they didn't invent the wheel, but they took the training they did with the County Office of Education and translated for our district's use, and they made sure to incorporate my training to each and every employee, which not every district is able to do. They've incorporated varying voices and perspectives into their diversity, equity, inclusion committee, including those that are not particularly interested in everything. But, you know, so we want everybody on board, and I'm happy that they made a concerted effort to bring everyone along together. At the end of the presentation, there were numerous comments from other districts about how great it out they did, and how it was great to, and that was really great to hear from all the others, having, I guess, kumirekudos. So, at the end of the day, this district's trying to develop kind and pathetic productive members of society. Students encounter people from a variety of different backgrounds, abilities, and cultures, and they need to have the tools and understanding how to interact with and work with people different than themselves. So, I'm proud of the work the district is doing, and proud of the work that they will see at that time. So, thank you very much, Shelley. And it's my report. So, moving on to 5.6 report is the superintendent report, Dr. McCleod.
Yes, so, yeah, some of the same things you've mentioned as far as Equity Conference, et cetera, have been part of what we've been involved in as a district. I too have appreciated the time with the foundation president, thank you, Will, for the work that all of you and your directors are doing. It's wonderful to have the opportunity to meet with our PTA presidents every month. They are very insightful and provide just extraordinary leaderships. Gigi, please make sure that you share that with your peers and with everybody at the school. It's just fantastic what happens in our schools as a result of that extraordinary leadership and the volunteers that truly are so highly skilled and doing great things. DMCTA, really appreciate Kevin and the entire team. And we had a great meeting with representatives from every school site this last week, about a week ago, and we had conversations about strategic planning, and they're just very insightful as far as ideas, et cetera, so that's great. The district does continue to very much prioritize the Delmar Heights school project. We have continued to be, the court hearings and cases appreciate the board's involvement and commitment to making sure that that school gets built. It is at the highest of what we are paying attention to, and so we are looking forward to the next court date, March 6th. So, thank you to everybody for your ongoing efforts in making sure that we get that school built as soon as possible, and we get that work underway as soon as possible again. I do want to next introduce our Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Ryan Stanley, because we have a new director here tonight for the first time. I will let you introduce her, Ryan, and then I have one more thing after you're done.
So, it is my pleasure to be able to introduce our selection to be our next Director of Business Support Services. So, this is Marley Helm, and she, we are lucky enough to have her come to us from the San Diego Union High School District, where she served previously as their Director of Child Nutrition Services. So, Marley's experience for the last four years in that role has given her ample opportunities to work with budgeting, purchasing, organizing, directing the entire department's daily operations, and we're incredibly confident that those experiences are going to enable her to be able to seamlessly transition into our business services department. So, welcome, Marley.
I just want to say thank you all so much for giving me the opportunity to serve the students and the community in this role, and I'm just really excited to join the Delmar Union School District in this capacity. Thank you so much.
Marley, we're so happy to have you here. You're very fortunate. And the very best part that you can be by far is our student spotlight, and, you know, we have students here from Carmel Delmar, so is it Miss Lerner, are you going to introduce her? Or who is, who gets to do the introductions?
Okay. I'll do it.
Super.
Motion for the, for the imminent for January 18.23 meeting passes. And we are six consent agenda, 6.1 to 6.18 consent items. Does anybody have any?
Yeah, just a, just a quick question on the school year calendar, just to confirm that this calendar still matches that the San Diego's calendar as we have done the past years. Are there any differences from previous years?
It does. It matches, yes, as we have in previous years. Thank you.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items 6.1 to 6.18?
Sorry.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion to approve the consent agenda passes. Seven, Curriculum Instruction, 7.1, board report, C+. Shada Peterson and Sarah Raskin.
Good evening. Tonight, it's a pleasure to have Sarah Rask in here, coordinator of Curriculum Instruction, who, who has really done an incredible job in shepherding along some of the wonderful changes and progress we've seen with C+ over the last couple of years, so just wanted to speak to that.
Thank you, Shelley, and good evening, President Mock, members of the board. It's always a pleasure to be with you. This evening, we'll be providing an update on the three priority areas of focus for our team program, including cohesion, program growth, and communication. The C+ Advisory Committee began during the 2019-2020 school year with the goal of increasing cohesion and exploring opportunities for program growth, and continues as a supportive feedback loop between the C+ specialists and our instructional services team, as well as an opportunity to gain an understanding of statehood perspectives on district-wide C+ programs through such avenues as student focus groups that are facilitated each year by our principals, as well as through the C+ invitation that we had last spring to provide other families and community an opportunity to provide feedback. This feedback is maintained by the advisory team and used to create our schedules that really reflect these areas of program growth that we'd like to see. Additionally, cohesion within disciplines facilitates increased alignment and program offerings across schools, provides for discipline-specific professional learning to support meaningful instruction. For example, very recently, our arts specialist had an opportunity to attend the TAB Arts Studio Conference in Colorado, and they came back so excited about all that they had learned. They were sharing with their colleagues, as well as other members of the C+ program and myself, and all that they learned will really be able to come back and directly enhance the learning for our students here in Delmar. And we also have increased opportunities for collaboration through the creation of the C+ Hub. I'm going to show you that. The C+ Hub is an internal Google site where we're able to support communication and sharing of resources, and this is what the hub looks like. This hub, as you can see, if I go up to the navigation, there is a page for every one of our specialty teams, and what we're looking at is the art page, and they're all formatted quite similarly. And I'm just going to point out two areas of the hub. One is the meeting agendas. This is very important, because within this tab, we collect all of the agendas over the course of the year that really help support the team in a cohesive approach to meeting their objectives, their school disciplines, their objectives for the year. It also supports important communication between our C+ discipline teams and our principals to be able to discuss opportunities for support and resources needed. And also, should we hire new members of the team, it provides an opportunity to really share where a discipline has been and where they're going with their objectives. And additionally, within this hub, we have, of course, pictures of our fabulous specialists, but we also, most importantly, have a collection of shared resources. So, we talk about cohesion, one of the most important aspects of that is being able to share instructional resources, and so here, we collect that, we share resources across the entire district, within and across disciplines. I'm really proud this evening to be able to share the growth that we have been able to achieve in our C+ program this year, and that's really reflective of the feedback that we've received from teachers and students and community through our focus groups and the C+ invitation that was held last spring. This year, we've increased music and art at all schools. We have music specialists in the Center for Youthful World Music, supplementing our music program throughout the district, along with arts specialists at every site. And now, we're very pleased to be able to share that we have music and art for all students all year long, very consistently. We've also added explicit technology instruction with... We've also added explicit technology instruction with the position of innovation technologists STEAM this year. Our innovation technologists meaningfully integrate tech tools into the instruction to support students with learning core curriculum. And they also develop and co-facilitate design thinking learning experiences that are aligned to content standards, which as you know, is a priority action. Our science specialists collaborate with classroom teachers to provide hands-on lab experiences for students that enhance the amplified science curriculum. And this year, we've also added foreign language to the STEAM Plus program, two new primary Spanish specialists. Our Spanish specialists use art, music, and game-based learning to immerse our kindergarten to third grade students in a multi-sensory language experience. Additionally, all STEAM specialists, and I don't want to forget our fabulous E6 specialists, right Kevin? Don't forget them, most important, but Kevin here. That they, one of the most important aspects that they've also been able to bring this year is to be able to offer lunch club opportunities for students related to their discipline. And we've heard about those lunch clubs, if you recall, last month from our PTA president, Matthew Chang. And this picture that you're looking at shows sixth graders participating in a choice robotics class using Lego mindstorms to build and code robots to navigate obstacles. We've also increased communication through site-based communication as well as STEAM Plus spotlight videos that are shared monthly by the district. This year, we also have six specialists serving as STEAM Plus discipline leads. These teachers support their colleagues with setting meeting agendas, articulating program objectives, curating those shared resources within our STEAM Plus hub, and highlighting student learning through the STEAM Plus spotlight videos, which one, which we will see tonight. This past summer, the STEAM Plus leads also collaborated across disciplines to develop belief statements that really define how our STEAM Plus program is supporting our students with developing the skills that matter most, including, for example, growing global learners that appreciate diversity. We see this explored through the diversity of art forms and culture studied within studio art, music, and language offerings. Finally, our STEAM Plus leads also use these belief statements to support this program communication by curating such themes as joy and learning and building connections, which really showcase learning within those STEAM Plus spotlight videos. So I've mentioned it now a few times, the STEAM Plus spotlight video. Every month, again, our district puts together with the help of our STEAM Plus leads, a spotlight video that is shared with our community. Tonight, we're going to see our February communication, which will also be shared with families this Friday through the principal newsletter. Our theme for this particular month is creative confidence. And the creative confidence theme really highlights how our STEAM Plus program is empowering our students to ask questions, to take risks, and to build self-assurance. So we'll go ahead and play that video for you now.
And with that, we're very happy to answer any questions you might have about our program. Thank you for allowing us this opportunity.
Thanks, Karen. Anybody have questions, comments?
Thanks. It looks great. I like the collaborative process you've gone to, to, to make the changes over time. Can you just maybe just highlight, if you look back like 10 years ago versus now, what do you think are like the big changes that you would point to in STEAM Plus curriculum?
Yes, I think, you know, really, you spoke to it so well, remember, how important the opportunity to really collaborate and maybe get a community-based opportunity. So when I think about the opportunities that we have to bring in language, to bring in the rich science experiences that we've had before, when you think of science to the duration of the program, but not necessarily the meaningful collaboration articulation from the classroom to the science specialists. So having more opportunities like that, that really partner what's happening in the classroom directly with the learning that's happening in STEAM Plus, another such example would be with our innovation technologists, I think really has taken us forward in certain so many ways within the program.
Any wishy-washy questions? Also, as part of that collaboration, it really has established a practice of parity and equity among all of our school sites. So they are able to share those resources together, meet regularly, so that students have very similar experiences from one program to the next and one school to the next.
Thank you. Could you go back again and just show us all the specialties that we have offered? I think it might have been like in one of those.
Yes, and this isn't necessarily all of the specialties. This is just the difference in the growth from where we were maybe a year ago till now, as far as our focus based on the feedback that we had received from our focus groups, our students, our parents, and the growth that we've made within that last year.
I'm sorry. I thought you showed us something that showed each of the, that.
In names and the video, perhaps? The video, yes.
So we have PE, we have art, music, Spanish.
Yes.
Science.
Innovation.
Innovation.
Yes.
Six.
We have six total.
Okay, so then we have the six specialists that serve in the STEAM needs.
That's correct.
One specialist for each.
That's correct. Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Do we need to change that acronym now?
That's the plus, captures it.
I did have a question that was broad, kind of DMS, I mean, so maybe it'd be something that, it's not specific program specific, but like they were asking about how the, the proposition that was on the ballot last year, how does that affect the program? Chris, can you speak that there?
So there still is some work, because that was a proposition and not legislation that was written by the legislature, there still is a little bit of work and looking at how that directly impacts. And we're a little bit unique compared to some other districts because of the support we get from the foundation. So, you know, there's potential fluctuation there. While the foundation has been fantastic and we've seen steady growth, that that's a piece that we're, we're still wondering and as we're, as well as just general the casco across the state, looking at a little more guidance as we're looking towards what we do with that for next year.
Thank you. Yeah, it looks like, looks wonderful. It looks like it's the one brighter. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. 7.2, word report for the teacher input regarding kindergarten schedule. So there is one speaker for this, this item, but we'll have the presentation first and then we'll speak afterwards.
All right, good evening. So this is a report on teacher input regarding the kindergarten schedule. And as, just to refresh, as regarding the timeline, so per board member request, we have a special board meeting in August for the purpose of discussing full-day kindergarten every day beginning on the first day of school for the 22, 23 school year. And then at that time, board gave direction to engage with parents and teachers to get input during the course of the 22, 23 school year. As a reminder, our current kindergarten schedule is a minimum day during the first six weeks of school. Students begin at the same time as other grade levels. They're dismissed at 12:30. And then the full-day schedule begins on the seventh week of school. That schedule is for the purpose of assessing students so that they can, our teachers can better meet student needs on an individual basis. The process for input, so as a way of receiving input from parents, we conducted a survey for all kindergarten through sixth-grade families. We have 978 respondents. Fifty-seven percent indicated interest in full-day kindergarten beginning on the first day of school. Forty-three percent indicated interest in keeping the current schedule. And that was the only question that was asked, full day, beginning on the first day of school, or interest in the current schedule. And then as a result of that, we received direction to get input from teachers before any changes would be considered regarding a kindergarten program. So those meetings occur November through January, actually, February had one very recently. And 100% of district kindergarten teams provided input via in-person meetings. And 100% of individual kindergarten teachers strongly recommend maintaining the six-week minimum day schedule. And so then here I am, recording on their input and feedback. So each team expressed appreciation for the six-week assessment period, and all teams unanimously expressed a strong desire to continue the current six-week minimum day schedule. As part of meeting with them, there were, every teacher had the opportunity to share their insights as to what this six-week period allowed for and why it was so critically important to the success of students. And they were, the comments and feedback was very, very similar across all nine schools. First, to assess the academic needs of students. But also, and equally important was expressed, they have the opportunity to engage with students on an individual level, allowing teachers to really understand the social, emotional needs of each child. And that although this won't be long-term implications that currently, right now, for children who experienced the pandemic and many, many have limited exposure to preschool opportunities, playgroup opportunities, that beginning the school year currently for children feels very, they, they are coming to us very needy in terms of they're unsure and lack confidence in the social and academic, in the social and academic setting because of the experience they've had with COVID. Again, short-term, hopefully, we're at the end of that, but still a very real piece of how our children are arriving in kindergarten right now. They spoke to establishing a strong relationship with students and families and setting the stage for a successful school career into the future. That these first six weeks really set the stage for tremendous success over the course of the year. Every kindergarten team expressed great satisfaction in the progress that students make over the course of the school year. It was described as a, by one teacher in particular, as a go slow to go fast that when that full day begins on the seventh week, our students are very prepared, feel confident, and successful during that extended day period. That our teams felt very strongly that it meets the developmental and cognitive needs of students. That sometimes what we'll hear is that my child attended a full-day preschool program, but now they have a minimum day kindergarten program. And what was shared was that the cognitive demands of preschool program versus the cognitive demands of a kindergarten program are very different, with the kindergarten program being much more rigorous. And then appropriate, this, this provides the opportunity to appropriately prepare students for the systems and structures of school, leading to a successful transition to a rigorous full-day program. And we've had speakers who have spoken to what it requires for the systems and structures to be established and students to feel successful and confident throughout their school day. And that it allows for support of students' success and confidence as learners as they live through our system. So what support are we providing for families? So during our kindergarten information meetings, which take place in March, we will share information about the after-school care provided at those meetings, that provided during the course of the school year, that will be shared at those meetings with details. And we do provide care at each site, beginning on the first day of school and beginning at 12:30. And it is free of charge to those families who qualify for care. And that would be families who have students that qualify for free reuse lunch, any foster youth, or any students or families that may be experiencing homelessness. We do have the extended home opportunities program grant, and those monies are expressly intended for students who fall within any one of those categories. So with that, thank you. Happy to respond to your question.
Thank you, Shelly. Thank you for, for coming back and reporting. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Okay, so we've got the teacher input, we've got the parent input. How do we marry the two?
I'm sorry, I understand your question.
It's a slight majority, but a majority of parents want full day kindergarten, and you have teacher input. How do we come to a middle ground? Because I think it's really important that we listen to that parent input and not just show the stat. And that seems like this report is saying that there's nothing, what is our, what is our next step here? How do we have gathered both sides' input?
I was given direction to gather input from both sides, so that's what I'm reporting on. And with a concerted effort to ensure that our parents know that care is available and free to those families that qualify.
That's not answering my question, Shelly. How are we acknowledging that 57% of families want full day kindergarten?
Well, I think we have acknowledged, we gave the survey, spoken to teachers. Survey results don't mean that necessarily result in a change in programming.
Can I, can I interject?
Please.
I think, I think it comes to education. And it sounds to me, as somebody who's had three kids that have been in kindergarten, if I knew that 100% of the kindergarten teachers feel that it's an important part of their child's education to have it set up this way, maybe my thinking that I want a different schedule in kindergarten would be different. Because I don't know that when you ask those questions of the parents, they knew the teacher's feelings on, on doing it the way that we're doing it. Is that right?
There was no additional, the questions were asked without additional narrative, correct? Because I believe that information, our teachers do a wonderful job of sharing that information with our kindergarten families as they move through our system. And I think that our, it was not possible for me to share, this is what would happen if we had a full-day kindergarten, because that would require coming together with the kindergarten teams to, to discuss what would happen if it were full-day kindergarten. What I can tell you is that with the idea that was originally shared, that we would have a substitute in the room potentially, so that teachers could be released to administer assessments, that across the board, all nine school sites with all of the individuals representing our kindergarten. that across the board, all nine school sites with all of the individuals representing our kindergarten program, shared that really it would have probably a negative impact to have another adult, a substitute, in the room who didn't know the systems and structures of kindergarten, and that is such a critical piece of those first six weeks of school. Having students adjust to, this is the way my, my teacher does it, this is how we're establishing the rules and the systems and structures within our kindergarten program, and another adult who may not be able to reinforce that at the end of, you know, in the latter half of the day. Great concern about that. Also concerned about the fact that teachers would have to then spend time to prepare for a substitute. And under typical circumstances, it's challenging to prepare substitute plans for a substitute within a kindergarten program, particularly challenging during the first six weeks of school when students are still learning, for many, it's their first school experience, and students are working out learning the systems and structures of school.
And I would venture to say that if, if the same parents were asked, do you want a full-day kindergarten, after knowing the feelings of the teachers and how it would benefit their students, maybe they would change their position on it. I just think that in asking a parent, do you want full-day kindergarten? Well, sure, that makes sense to me without knowing the rest. But if I knew all that other stuff, maybe that would change someone's thinking. And it sounds to me like the teachers are unified in feeling the way that they're feeling. There's gotta be some reason for that, I would imagine. And if those parents knew that, maybe they would reassess where they're coming from. I'm just wondering if maybe there's a way to give that information to them.
Yeah, and I agree with you, Doug. I mean, you're asking a scheduling question versus an education question. And I'm sure if the parents had, you know, you would do it a formal survey. You have like, question, new information, and then what would be your response in the case of knowing the new information and the confidence in a parent sort of this? I agree. They would agree that it makes sense to keep the schedule in precedence. But Shelley, I really appreciate you taking the time to go out to all the schools and talk to all the kindergarten teachers. I mean, this is how it's been done for a long time. It's always good practice to kind of, you know, stress-test it and see if things have changed and there's a reason to make changes. So you've done that. It sounds like it's been very thorough and comprehensive and involved all the schools and all the teachers that I really, really could ask for anymore as far as making sure we get good information about how this program's working and whether there's any alternative that would make more sense and clear from the feedback that it's good out there, and we should be happy to have.
We do have a public comment on this. Would you like to, can you vote in? Oh, sorry. It's Gina Vargas.
It's me again. Hi. I'll keep it pretty short because I am really pretty much echoing everything that Shelley said. I do want to thank Shelley for coming out and making the time to meet with all of us. It really made us feel heard. I know we've had, in my thirty years, many iterations of kindergarten, going from just strictly half-day to now a more, to a full-day after the six weeks. The first six weeks of school are just so valued for assessment. Every other grade level gets their kids and can talk to the former teacher the year before. You can look at data, you can look at, you even know the kids because you've seen them on campus. We're the only grade level that gets kids and we don't even know who they are. You look at your list and you've got this name of Twenty Darling, and you think, here we go. So the assessment gives you time to sit with that child and work with them. And the first six weeks gives you time to do two per day with some wiggle room. And the wiggle room is super important because sometimes you have a child who you're assessing, and they're wilting. And so you play a couple games with them, and then you ask the parent, can you bring them back next week on Tuesday? And you try again. And you really get to know them and meet them where they are. And then you give them that extraordinary school experience, because you assess them, you know them, you know your class, and you can really plan. The curriculum we get does not drive my instruction. It helps me plan instruction based on what my kids need. My kids, what they need is what I deliver through the instruction that the district, or the curriculum the district gives me. Kids are learning so much that first month of kindergarten, everything is new. Even if they've done preschool before, my own daughter went to childcare starting at six weeks, and she was in preschool, childcare, all the way through. But kindergarten's a different beast. It's, you come in, you're listening to this person talk about how to hang up your backpack, where to put your lunch, how to sit at the rug, here's where we go to eat, here's all of these procedural things. They aren't even educational things. They're just about how to do school. And it's really taxing cognitively for them, just to learn all of this new stuff. And by the end of the day, they're wiped. We could have them stay till two-thirty, but I just don't know that that added beginning of the year, couple more hours, would give them anything more than what they get by leaving at two-thirty, coming back the next day, super excited for more. And by the time we're done assessing all the kids, we're planning great curriculum, and they come and stay full day, they are jazzed. So I just really, you know, giving this lots of careful thought because I always want to think, could we do something better? Can we do it differently? I really think that the program we have is one to be proud of. It produces great kids that are ready for first grade, and I think our parents and our community are very happy with it. And I do appreciate the survey. I think that was a little tricky because like Shelley said, you couldn't really, okay, sorry, you couldn't like ask a deep, deep question, so anyway with that, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. My general feeling about this is that I, you know, it's, I trust the teachers, I trust the professionals. And I think that they've made it very clear about what the benefits are of having it. To me, I can see how it would be beneficial if the parents maybe had those few extra hours and not and be able to plan for that. But, you know, it's given such a slim majority, to me, that's like fifty-seven percent. It's not, it's kind of like, almost like Doug's saying, it's, you know, maybe with a different tweak of the question, you might have a different information, they might have answered differently. So for me, it's, I think I'm comfortable with where we're at. And, you know, again, like I would just trust the professionals, the people that are giving us suggestions and everything.
And it's not even a question on the part of the teachers. It's a hundred percent of the teachers. If it was split among the teachers, maybe, but when, you know, a hundred percent of them tell you you have a tail, maybe you should look around and see if you have a tail. A hundred percent is a pretty strong, you know, observation that this is something that needs to stay in place.
And just to add, we haven't had a single apparent email about this, not a single apparent speaker. I haven't heard a peep about it, so.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your report, Shelley. Come back with that. Moving on to eight, administration policy, eight-one-one board reports, your present report on district goals.
Good evening. As I appeal out, we do, I will give an update on certain goals this evening. You hear a lot every board meeting and are obviously very present at our schools and in various ways, meetings, et cetera, and are very aware of our district goals in action. I appreciate the board's involvement and active participation in seeing them through. So I, this evening, will share with you, as you know, we have three levers, so I'll discuss a couple of things from each lever. Our first lever is strong academic core and high-quality instruction. Lever two is the skills that matter most to the community's environments. So I'll start with lever one. This is our strong academic core and high-quality instruction. And first focusing here, you are very well aware of our continued and sustained work with Harvard Project Zero, Ron Richart, creating cultures of thinking. And it is so exciting and wonderfully rewarding to see such depth in understanding and actual teacher expertise in this area because of their own skill and their collaborative learning together with Ron Richart, their principals, and now teacher leaders throughout our district. So during this year, we have continued implementing learning and participation for all of our teachers based on the teachers' feedback. We have actually developed and implemented a plan to identify the teachers of each school, so that's been exciting to see. And in fact, our work this year has led to an opportunity for our district teachers to become fellows, which is exciting. They'll be diving further into creating cultures of thinking and action, and will help lead this work at our school sites. This will formally get underway in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three. So this next piece of teachers serving as fellows will be very exciting. It's wonderful, wonderful to see our teachers' leadership and expertise at such high levels. STEAM Plus, you already heard about earlier this evening. This is part of our priority action to develop a STEAM Plus learning structure that promotes student choice and different student opportunities based on their grade and interest. So that's been exciting to see that come to fruition through the advisory committee as well as the implementation at school sites. You heard last month about some of our tiered interventions. And regarding, we've got, as you know, as we're supporting our students at the school sites, you know, we have hired counselors, we have five exceptional counselors who do various work with specific students who have identified needs. They also do small group work. I talked to last time about the assemblies they're doing. They've had even more assemblies since then. And we also have interventions that are targeting reading as well as mathematics. So we have reading intervention teachers who have been added, as well as our mathematics posters who are focused on coaching in the classroom now. It's been a wonderful thing that's happening this school year, working directly with teachers and students. And our safety net is a place where every student's progress is discussed at school sites with teams of teachers, their principal, obviously, the child's classroom teacher. And to see that approach where every child has a name and their progress is discussed at such a high level is truly remarkable. Lever two, we've taught, these are the skills that matter most. One of the things I'll pull out, it was talked about earlier, is our work with diversity, equity, and inclusion. And when you think, I appreciate, GY, you're speaking to this, you and Board Member Wooden were there. For all are part of the Equity Conference as well. And Shelley and Sharon just did a spectacular job talking about our district's work, as you said. And our objective really were very clear. We want to ensure that each child receives equitable access to a quality education in order to develop their full academic potential and prepare each one to thrive in what we know as a diverse society. So we wrap our arms around that, and that's what we're committed to. And when we talk about diversity, equity, inclusion, we talk about each one of those things by defining what it means and what that feels like to children and how we make their experience at school one, where they're getting what each, with what each one of them needs. So it's exciting to see all of that in progress and all of that work being done so well district-wide. Student well-being, I will address the focus groups that we are having go on this spring. Some of those have already started. We're expanding those. We do have a more of a focus at the upper grades because those students are really informing how we think about what our next moves are with strategic planning. So it'll be exciting to use what they're talking about in those student focus groups as we develop our Portrait of a Learner. Lever three, as you know, is environments. So we've got a couple of things to pull out here. We've got priority actions around our major building projects. Delmar High School, we've talked about, Delmar Hills Academy, Pacific Sky School. Those are our major building projects, as you know, throughout this school year. We also have a focus on creating interesting playgrounds and play spaces that support different age groups and levels of ability. And our new playgrounds that we've put in already, and that we will be putting in this summer, truly are different, and they're addressing different children's needs and interests, and they are truly so much beyond what we've had in our play areas before. So that's the update on some of our priority actions, addressing our three main levers from the seat. I'm happy to answer any questions or get any input from you.
Well, then you can continue standing there. Moving on to the next one. Eight point two, which is the board report for strategic planning process update.
So as you know, then, this has been a focus all year. The board has given great direction every month as to what happens next in our strategic planning process. So this is where we currently are. Tonight, I'll be sharing with you about our community involvement, which we've done a lot of outreach for. Our design teamwork that is just about ready to begin at our process timeline, I'll revisit again with all of you. So again, this was the board's purview. From the very beginning, the board's direction was creating this collaborative process that really was open and inclusive of any and all who could and would like to participate in order that we establish these shared long-range goals and realize the vision. This is the priority action. You're very familiar with it. It is guiding our work this year. And this is where we currently are with that. It's, it's our priority action is talked about community involvement. The board has been very instrumental in helping us shape this. Since we last met, we've done a lot. We have reached, done a lot of outreach to our entire parent community, parents and guardians. All received an email and open invitation with all of the information to participate, as well as all of our district staff and the entire community through a press release. So as of today, we have more than one hundred people who have officially signed up and are excited to participate in these meetings that will happen and start at the end of this month. And take us through March, and then we'll be on to the next phase. So between meetings two and three, there will be another opportunity for folks throughout the community, our staff, as well as community members, our parents, to provide additional input or their own input about priorities. So a survey will be sent out after the second design team meeting, and it will help shape then what we'll talk about and grapple with as we continue to develop our Portrait of a Learner in the third and the fourth meeting. And then the other thing I wanted to talk with you about, the board has been very much interested in, what does this look like as we measure, what are we going to measure? And then how is that going to take shape over time? So we've done a lot of looking into what are the various options. And I'm excited, as we've been able to look into working with the county office, talking with other school districts, other superintendents, other companies, universities, to be able to bring forward, it's intended at the next board meeting, a research-practice partnership with one of the professors, Dr. Ellen Daly at UCSD, that will actually help us identify what those constructs are and how we will measure them over time. Specifically to look at the, one of the things that was very enticing, has been very enticing to us in working with Dr. Daly, is his work and research around culture and how that fits into strategic planning and how we measure elements and those constructs at the onset and then throughout our work. So we expect that we will be able to bring that back to the board at the March board meeting. So this is our design teamwork. You can tell here that we're now in this envision stage of developing our Portrait of a Learner. This is not something, you've already seen this. So this is what will happen at each of these meetings with design team meeting one, two, three, and four. We're very excited about this taking shape so that we really do have a definition of what that experience is for our students and what is a Portrait of a Learner. And again, our timeline that you're very familiar with. I spoke about each of these pieces either previously or as we modify it based on the input we're getting, either from our consultant, Patel, which Catherine talked about earlier this evening, meeting Colin Lewis, who is going to be our facilitator, as well as the conversations we've had with other districts around strategic planning, and then meeting most recently with Dr. Daly, as far as what his partnership might, would potentially look like in our district. So we're very excited. It's made, we're making great progress. And we're very eager for the design team to meet at the end of the month. And I'm thrilled that our board continues to take such a vested interest in being a part of it and that our board members will be there as much as possible as well. So thank you.
Just thank you. It's exciting to see that this process has evolved so much, so robust, and we're just at the cusp of, you know, digging in with these meetings, so it's exciting. A hundred and fifty people coming to attend is great. And I know that you're in communication with all the school sites and the outreach of the community, so it's great. And the fact that you've been exploring this partnership with Dr. Daly and the potential to really evaluate our progress over time on a recurring basis, I think is very exciting. So we look forward to hearing more about that at the next meeting. But thank you. But thank you, I look forward to it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. I look forward to all that. I appreciate the work with Dr. Daly as well. I think that'll be a good opportunity for people to additionally put in their input. We've been saying we want to gather as much input as possible. So we kind of have like a good baseline here. So that'll be wonderful. Thank you. That's it with that one. Oh, all of you, I think you're in the wrong world. Or at least, eight point three, board approval for the CSPA delegate assembly. We're actually not.
No, this is, the board is where the, those who have been nominated for delegate assembly, so those are in front of you, and you can vote on up to seven from the list that you have.
I'm currently on, I'm not up for election. The only thing I would suggest is that, and Scott eventually, he chose not to do it, I think. I would suggest that having a wide variety of districts and voices is useful because it kind of represents everybody in the county, in our delegation. So and some of these folks are incumbents and they've done a fine job. So I would go down, I would just suggest some names. Kate Bishop, Melissa Crowe works, she's out of Warner. Her school is very small, so it's very helpful to have a different, her point of view. Barbara Ryan has been there for a very long time, so she's very useful just having knowledge of being a board member for like, I don't know, thirty-plus, forty years almost. Ciprianne Vargas was there previously, but that means, I think he was a time when he was, went out for a little while and came back, or he's asking to come back, yes. And he's also very, very good. Katrina Young in Santa Gilda is great. I think I'm only going to five, but those are the names, people I'm familiar with. I have also memories to remember at the book collaborative. I think that she's a wonderful person and also in our North County area would be helpful.
I would, I would, is this something we're going to vote on? I would move for those that you're familiar with because I'm just throwing darts. So if you're familiar with them, I'll rely on your appraisal and support your slate.
Say in the middle of addition, Rhea Stewart from.
So I think I would have six on here. I don't know if they, if you guys, yeah, I'll go ahead and check the ones. Is that okay, Karen, or do you have any suggestions?
So we can go for seven?
We can go for seven. I've already kind of mentioned six names, I think.
Okay. Let's add Kelly Licker.
You don't have to do seven.
You don't have to do seven.
We haven't done seven, we've tried to.
My concern is I don't know these other people, so I'm just thinking.
No, it'll be up to, I believe, up to seven. So seven will be elected on it. Do you?
Sorry, I didn't hear you say.
From South Bay.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Why?
Just to have it from, you know, the North County to the South.
Geographic.
Geographically expansive, yeah.
I mean, I'm comfortable with the ones that G Y actually knows and has worked with. They do represent a geographic diversity in addition to Rhea Stewart from Carter. So that I would move to those.
Yeah, those people I know. I just, I don't know Kelly Licker. I don't have a problem adding her, but like, I don't, are you familiar with her at all, or?
No.
Oh, just working, just listening to geography. Okay.
I know you've added Kate Bishop.
Yeah, she's kind of.
Just close to South Bay.
Yeah. If it helps, there, I think there are other South Bay. There may be another person from South Bay already currently. I don't, don't hold me to that, but I think there may be another one.
Okay.
How about we do the six then? Is that okay?
Okay.
So list those names.
So I'll check in, I'll listen for you. Kate Bishop, Melissa Crowe, Barbara Ryan, Rhea Stewart, Ciprianne Vargas, and Katrina. Okay?
So moved.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. And so how?
All of favor.
All of favor, yes.
Hi.
All right. Hope you prove that ballot passes. Thanks, guys.
I have pressure on you.
They're good, I promise. Operations facilities, nine point one, board report facilities update with Chris Kelly.
All right. Good evening, Superintendent McClure, members of the board, persons in line. Tonight's report facilities update, we will cover Pacific Sky School, the Delmar High School rebuild, Delmar Hills Academy modernization, and then I have some district capacity information that was requested last month that I brought. Pacific Sky School, not much to report. We're getting very close to a notice of completion. Again, I believe that would be likely to the next board meeting. And just little bits and pieces, making sure that items are finalized and, you know, a little something here or there is done before we sign off on it.
Is this a punch list stuff?
Punch list, I mean, little things like, as we were getting to the very end, some before, some right after punch list, items with, you know, the pushbars and how you can, you know, you have the pushbar for the big doors, and in the middle, there's the bar there. The ease for Alan, our custodial, and our custodial staff to remove that wasn't exact. So little, little, little things like that that have not had much of a cause, but take a little time to order. And there's some minor pieces we had with an HVAC unit that wasn't working. We've just gotten that fixed. So there are little pieces like that that we don't want to sign off until we have those completely cleared.
But all those are warranted, I mean, not the?
Oh, they're warranted. I just, there are some things that if you know it's an issue, it can be taken care of very quickly. Once they're off, then I'm going to warranty instead of having to, I'll finish it off. So I believe we'll have all of those wrapped for next month.
A way to waive the warranty by signing off on it.
No, we move into going through that process rather than having the contractor just take care of it right now.
Right.
No, that's a good question. Delmar High School rebuild. As you know, we are at a point where we have been stopped by an injunction. As you also know, we shared last month, and as we shared, the district has been determined to comply with CECL by the Court of Appeal. So we are down to one lawsuit that we are dealing with. That one lawsuit is a lawsuit that was filed against the city of San Diego. So it is actually against our district, but we're the real party in interest. We had a hearing scheduled for February third, and the tentative ruling that came out the night before was going to continue until March twenty-fourth. So we came in and our attorney argued that, you know, if that is too long, we would like to argue for and have the injunction lifted right away. However, the judge continued it again, and we had another hearing this last week, February ninth, at which time we did argue for the injunction to be lifted. That was not granted. However, that March twenty-fourth date was moved up to March sixth, which is a positive development in so much as it being continued less than it was originally being continued for. The other positive with that is that it is for the full hearing. So it should be that we are being heard on the whole hearing rather than just to lift the injunction. And we hope that that will be addressed, and we will be able to finish that lawsuit at March sixteenth.
And just for clarification, though, the request was made to lift the injunction. It wasn't that it wasn't granted, it wasn't considered.
Correct.
So there's a big difference between not granted and considering.
Was not considered and denied anyway. It was not considered at all.
Right.
She said she needed, she couldn't consider it at that time.
Well, she could have, but she just chose.
Refused to? One thing that I would like to note, a question was raised our way regarding water runoff from the Delmar Heights property as a result of rains we had in January. Unfortunately, we have had water runoff, but it is because we've not been able to finish the storm during improvements that are part of the project due to this injunction. The opponents of this project went into court and stopped us from installing these necessary improvements. And we have been forced to request permission from the COPOE and the opponents every time we need to make minor improvements to repair due to storms. The district has taken action to mitigate these impacts, and they clean up when we have storms. We finished the outfall improvements, though we were not able to finish the storm during work that would connect to those outfalls because that would require a larger project, and we were not allowed to do it. We have added berms and other measures to try to mitigate the impact of storms. And after the January rains, we actually met with state parks and had our contractors bring on tanker trucks that we were able to pump stormwater into the trucks and take them off to disposal appropriately. But all of this is reactionary because the problem is that we cannot finish the work necessary to fix those storm drain systems on the site. So again, I'm hopeful that the injunction will finally be lifted and the case completed on March sixth so that we can move forward with these improvements as well as finish the rebuild project. With that, the Delmar Hills Academy modernization.
Just, I'm sorry, just to ask for some clarification. Just for, so the issue with the runoff is storm drains that need to be finished, but that's part of the larger project, and that hasn't been allowed. So without those, we're getting runoff. And you can kind of make little tweaks and stuff to try to mitigate it, but that's not going to.
Well, so, yes, so all that we've been able to do is the outfalls. The outfalls are at the very end. But if you can't run the water to the outfalls, then the water just pools in places. We have the trenches, we weren't able to fill that in for some more electrical that's deducted. So we end up with water pooled in different areas. That water pooled in areas is an issue because if you have other storms, you already have water, and that will run off. So we needed to be able to remove it. And we were made aware of some water that was running through the side of the hill, but it was not being pumped off of our site by it. So we brought in, our contractors have been fantastic in supporting this, and we've done what we can to make sure that we are having, we are not having an impact, make sure that we're cleaning up after storms, and make sure that we are taking care of the environment.
That sounds like you're really trying to do a lot, do your best to try to mitigate it. It's just part of the larger project needs to, the injunction needs to be lifted before we can actually do the, do the actual work to fix the problem.
Exactly.
Thank you.
With the Delmar Hills Academy modernization, I appreciate the board, the presentation we were giving last month. As we're moving into the next step, we are updating cost estimates with the support of the contractors, looking at the stage into moving into construction documents, looking at phasing options as well, because that plays into not only cost, but timelines. And so with the layout of the campus, it's not just phasing based on, you know, we want to do one, two, three. You're also looking at the layout of the campus, you're looking at ingress and egress. And so we're working through those options and doing some review with the architect and the contractor with some of the items that we discussed earlier about where is cost that we can mitigate a little bit while still maintaining the project as best we can. And so we'll continue to work on that. We'll be able to update the board on our next steps and continue through, moving forward with that design process. And then there was district capacity information requested at the last board meeting. So a couple of points related to that. We have currently in the district twenty-six kindergarten classrooms with restrooms. We also this year have twenty-one kinder sections for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty and a half, which are comboed, I would call that twenty-one that have kindergarten students in it. Historical numbers of kinder sections range, they went back to fourteen, fifteen, twenty-one to twenty-five sections, not counting the pandemic launch year because that was skewed a little bit. And then we have, we will have twenty-nine kinder classrooms with restrooms after the hikes opened. So we know that there are three in that as well. And so that gives kind of the brief and a nutshell overview of where we are with capacity, kindergarten classrooms with restrooms and district-wide. Please, your governor. With that, happy answering questions about.
Please.
Questions, then we'll move on to nine point two. Board report for child nutrition program. Also a great. Thank you. Jamie Phillips, unfortunately, he is, he actually works on some advocacy at a statewide level, and he heads to Sacramento, so I'm going to be presenting for him two nights. But Jamie has made an impact, and we were just talking, he's been here for just over a month. And he's been making great impact, he's helped with this presentation. And next time we do a nutrition update, we'll be sure to have Jamie here to be able to share as well. So tonight, I'll talk about staffing, training, some outreach and stakeholder engagement, some information about the California Department of Education, and some small changes that are going to equal some big savings for us. When we look at staffing, after Jamie has been able to visit school sites multiple times as well as access the current central kitchen, some of the staffing needs are starting to be identified. Some of those needs are instruments on the start of the central kitchen and supporting operations. And so Jamie's been working with myself, working with Ryan on the HR side, looking at timing and moving forward with the staffing so that we can be prepared. He did note, it should be noted, surrounding districts have struggled with filling some vacancies, but he's optimistic with our reputation and competitive pay. We'll be able to take care of it and move forward with our, with the staffing. Also talk about special diets are one area in which nutrition services departments nationwide have seen an increase. And we're actually having a discussion with our new director of business support services, who is the CNS director, Marla Nowland. She spoke a little bit about, she was seeing that in syndicated too. And so with that rise in special diets, looking for somebody to fill a CNS supervisor dietitian role, and that'll be next on the agenda because this person will be able to help with that dietitian piece. There's also a need to have some support with kitchen supervision. And so Jamie can't be the only person doing that. So we are looking at filling a role in that realm coming up. Training is an area where Jamie has really helped us to move forward. The Healthy, Health Hunger Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten established minimum annual training requirements. And so these requirements are up here. And immediately, our new director has come in and started having leads meetings. So we have the leads each of the sites, he's bringing them together, having them every two to three weeks so that he can do a couple of things, the training piece. And on top of it, it is collaboration and helping to look at steps that we're taking at the school sites and bring some uniformity to the program across the district. And the stakeholder engagement, he has talked repeatedly about how that's instrumental in the successful program. I've been out at sites and I've seen trying food, talking with the kids. Our director has had the opportunity to meet with the district nurses about meal accommodations and milk substitution forms that will be necessary for those with special allergies. He's recently spoken with our health department, chief departmental operations regarding our health permits. He's determined that all items must be packaged to be served at sites. So he's coming to these pieces that he, as coming from Vista, had different steps to take and setting those up so that we have all those pieces set up with our central kitchen. And that's helped him to shift a little bit and make sure that he has this vision going forwards for setting up that central kitchen. So he's really been able to put in a lot of the work to understand what program we have here in the first month of the job, what can we do with that program, and how can we make that program as successful as possible. So I know he's been out at sites weekly, giving students feedback on the menu, giving feedback from the site, people at the site. And he was recently at Ocean Air to participate in our green team meeting with the students. So all in all, working with the sites and then also working with OKC, our vending wheel. He's looking at things like, we ended up with too many spruce cups. He's been looking at how can we get some reimbursement on those and not order as many. So pieces like that, that how can we reduce the cost that we're having as well as we are moving forward.
It appears he's talking to students. Is it possible to make sure? I think last month, we had a little girl named Lucy. Is it possible to make sure that she's one of those students that weighs in on at least how a piece of taste?
Absolutely. And we shared some Lucy's input and with Jamie, and so I will double check. I would be unsurprised if he's already checked in with, but I'll double check.
Well, I'm sure Lucy will check in with him.
And then with California Department of Education, we have entitlement money which can be used for sending money to food processors, receiving goods from USDA, allocating money to fresh fruit and vegetables, applying for unprocessed fruit and vegetable programs. And really, this is an area where the expertise of somebody who's been doing it for a while coming in and looking at how we can use the money most appropriately and get the most out of it has been huge for us. Jamie has already started looking at things. And a perfect example would be commodities, which is you can buy food through the federal government. Our, if we were running it, I would have expected commodities is the best deal. We look here, I forgot that. But Jamie knows that there's many of these that are best deal with commodities, but we also look at some of them to compare the prices. So this comparison, looking at the best pricing across the board and the experiences that are helping us as we attempt to utilize money that is not allocated for this year and be able to help use it for next year. So there's some things that we already had money. We had it allocated to things that are unallocated, and he's looking at buying, you know, long shelf items that could be used for next year. So really, a deep dive has helped us to find ways to use money that we may not have used. Twenty-five thousand dollars in the entitlement money and looking into. Twenty-five thousand dollars in the entitlement money and looking into CDE USDA being part of this unprocessed fruit and vegetable program and spending some money that will allow us to save money over the course of next year. And then finally, that, I was already speaking of some of the small changes that are helping with big savings, but there are things like coming in and the signage to show our reimbursable meals because as we move forward, also tightening up the process so we ensure that you'll get the right meals in students' hands, so that number one, they're getting what they need to have, to have a healthy meal. Number two, that we will pass audits and we'll get paid for all of those meals. And then that we're checking it off and we're getting all of those meals checked off appropriately. So just all of those little systems and making sure that that will help us so that we are able to get paid for the meals that we're serving. He also has just a little thing with changing vendors for some products around sporks and gloves, we've been buying through, I think, one vendor, give our other vendor we're working with and then looking at that, and we're going to save sixty-five percent on those things. So the little things, there's a bunch of little things that are going to start adding up, and then as we get to bigger things, I think he's going to really be able to help us save some money. And then adjusting meal accounts helps with not wasting and reducing waste, but also is going to save us money. So some of the adjustments actually have been up because we are seeing that, you know, we were really close to not having enough and they were just having an alternative meal, but some are going down, some of the ones that Lucy shared with us last month. And so helping to make sure that we're more on point with that, and then we're accounting it for it, so we have good data, so we're also making good adjustments on meal accounts because we have the true data from the month before. And with that, I'd be happy to answer as best I can questions on our meal.
Thank you, Chris. I love hearing about saving money.
Yeah.
As a guy that, you know, parents like cut coupons and stuff, saving money's awesome.
That's been a great person.
Yes, that sounds great. I just, I quickly, I was curious, and I know that this next item is coming up and maybe more appropriate there, I was just kind of curious, like, who, who's responsible for what is actually planning the food and planning the meals and stuff like that? Is that the?
That will be our director, Jamie Phillips, and this new position working together on that. So the dietitian side will help with looking at if there are tweaks to meals, making sure that we have the right meal setup, you know, you have the right fruits and vegetables and then pieces that make up a meal that is compliant. And then there's also a piece with this person where we do have a number of students who have needs and may have a medical need for certain diets, so this helps to make sure that we're in compliance and we're supporting those students when we get into certain meals with people, students with special needs, food needs.
You know, we're talking gluten and.
And this is really the document, ones that come through, and then they work closely with our district nurse, and so there's a process and then we set it up so we're making sure that we're addressing those needs that we should be addressing.
Okay, so it's Jamie and this director's position? Okay, great, just kind of figuring out where Lucy needs to go find her. Our person, okay, great. We'll move on to nine point three then, and that is board approval for new job description, child nutrition services dietitian and kitchen supervisor.
So, good evening, and this item segues really nicely from the previous report with Chris, with child nutrition services. So as we're building out our department, moving and shifting away from delivering a vending meal, but being able to prepare for our own in-house child nutrition services, being able to staff up our central kitchen, a big component of this is the fact that as you can see, we're delivering on to Jamie, but now also the fact that we are able to bring on in that next step for us is to be able to approve the job description for the child nutrition services dietitian and that kitchen supervisor. So as Chris spoke about in his report, you're exactly where you are, this is the person who is going to be working under the direction of the CNS director, and this person is going to be in charge of ensuring that we're compliant with state federal nutrition program mandates, making sure that we're developing the menus along with Lucy and others, developing menus, attending to the special need diet restrictions, and then this person will also help supervise the kitchen staff, participating in the training, the evaluation of kitchen staff. So we're asking for approval of our new job description.
Great.
I'm happy to move to approve, this is a tall order, to find somebody who can find healthy meals that kids will actually eat. I think a lot of parents would like to have this person in their house. But I think it's really important and not just to revert to like, we're just going to order pizza and that's going to be it, because kids eat pizza, but also trying to find really interesting, healthy foods that kids also will eat, but that is a tough job for folks, I don't know about that. I'm very different.
I'll say no in a second.
Yeah, could you just, like, in a nutshell, break down the difference between the child nutrition services director and this position?
Yeah, absolutely. So the child nutrition services director is really the one who has overseen the entirety of the program, so he's responsible for the supervision, the direction of, at the macro level, so we have the director who is in charge of the entire department, and then within there are those folks who have more of those specialized skills, and so really it's the CK dietitian is going to be that critical part to assist with the development of the menu, overseeing, helping to participate with the training, the kitchen staff with the cooks, with the CNS director, with the CNS, excuse me.
CD?
CNS diet meets, yes, thank you. So I think the director's the pinnacle and this is just below the director.
Correct.
I think there are so many requirements with the CNS department overall, with federal requirements and state requirements and budgeting, and it is a huge, I mean, it is a whole department in business within a school district that Jamie then will really be instrumental in making sure that all of those parts are in compliance, all of the paperwork, all of the budgeting, all of the ordering, all of that is really what Jamie Phillips is overseeing, and it is a big position in the district.
Is Jamie also a registered dietitian?
I don't believe he is.
But this person would be?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it sounds like there's like a need for the business aspects of it and also the nutritional aspect of it.
Business and compliance.
Yeah, business and compliance, and it sounds like the two will work together.
Right.
So if there's no other questions, we have motion on, and a secondary from Doug, and so all in favor? Aye. And that motion passes. All right. Twelve point one, there's a closing item, twelve point one, board review, reminder of upcoming DMOS events. Twelve point two, board review, reminder of upcoming district EMSF and PTA events. Twelve point three, preliminary items for the March twenty-three regular board meeting, anything? And twelve point four, German meeting, is there a motion, Jern?
For Jern.
Second? Is there a second? Can I second? Oh, I can second. Can I second? All who's in favor?
Aye.
Motion Jern meeting passes, meeting is adjourned at seven thirty-eight.
Thank you, everybody.